Clerk Seigris, can you please take roll call?
Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Kanguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seigris is both talking and present. Slavens.
Good evening.
Anne Snyderman.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody, in our first meeting. So the first item on the agenda is we're just going to go into closed session. We'll adopt the agenda when we get out and we'll do the pledge when we get out also.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for the purposes of discussing pending litigation in the case Percy et al. v. Canton Township.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Can we have a roll call to go into closed session, please?
Foster.
Yes.
Kanguly.
Yes.
Graham Hudak.
Yes.
Seigrist, yes. Slavens. Snyderman.
Yep.
Anne Borninski.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Off to closed session. We'll be right back. Okay, can I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
But it was trustee Foster.
Foster.
I threw my voice.
You guys keep doing that.
We sound a lot alike.
You do. We can rise for the pledge. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? It's right here now.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the agenda as amended, adding item G zero, consideration of board action on recommendation regarding pending litigation.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from December 13th, 2022?
So moved.
For? Clerk Seigris, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we're moving into public comment on agenda items only. Do we have any public comment on the agenda items only? No one in the room? Let me look online. Any public comments only online? You can raise your hand on Zoom and let us know. No public comments? No public comments. Okay, great. Public comments is over. Kind of a motion to pay the bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support. Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Fa... Okay, Kanguly. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item we have is a presentation by the Canton Cares Fund 2022 summary, and we have Laura Mortier and Beth Mead. Are you both coming up? Welcome and happy new year.
Year. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Laura Mortier. I'm the Recreation Supervisor for Canton Leisure Services as well as the Chair for the Canton Cares Fund Committee. The Canton Cares Fund was created back in 2018 to help support our current programs that are running and our residents outside of our regular general fund. It's an opportunity for companies and organizations and individual donors to support our programs, a way to fundraise for our programs and residents, and then this is also kept within the Canton Community Foundation, which has helped us with legitimacy and tracking of the funds and as well as accountability. Multiple programs and residents benefit annually from this fund, including a lot of our youth and our at-risk youth that are part of our Block Youth and Teen Center, a lot of our seniors from our Club 55 program, both youth and adults with special needs through our therapeutic rec. And then we also have a disaster and emergency relief fund within that as well. So if there's a resident struggling after a fire to the home or needing assistance with ADA accessibility in their homes, our fund can help with that. We work really closely with public safety and fire to help like identify a lot of those residents. Our committee right now is a total of six community members that volunteer to be a part of it. There is an additional liaison from Canton Township, and then Beth serves as the advisor from the Canton Community Foundation on the board as well. We are currently in the process of looking for more members. People's terms are up or no longer living in Canton, so we have to recruit more members. That process went through putting a call out for members in the focus, and we're working to interview them actually later this month to get them on board. The committee meets four times a year, and agenda items in that are a call out for donors annually for an annual appeal, as well as planning two fundraising events that we do annually. So last year, we held the annual Canton Cares Road Rally that started and ended at the summit but went all throughout the township, and then the Chili Cook-Off that takes place annually at the Canton Farmer's Market. All of the money raised for those goes directly into our unrestricted funds so that they can be used whichever fund needs help or whatever program needs assistance when that time comes. And then kind of some exciting news, if you're familiar with the mom prom that's been taking place for over a decade here in the township, they have decided that the Canton Cares Fund will actually be their beneficiaries this year of the 2023 mom prom, so that's pretty exciting as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Beth Mead. She's the President and CEO of the Local Impact Alliance, where she'll be able to give a little bit more update on the actual funds and money that has come in and what we've spent, you know, since really 2018, specifically this last year.
I passed out the financials for this past year. You'll see at the top the beginning balance as of 1/1/22, and it shows each of the silos of giving that you have, the nine different accounts that you have. People, when they make donations, they can make it specifically to an account. If they don't say which account, we automatically put it in the unrestricted account. The revenue there, you'll see when it came in as a donor gift or if it came in as a part of one of the events that we held. Below that are the expenses. Some of those are the administrative expenses or the expenses to do the event, as well as some of the grants that we gave. You'll see a line item there for grocery assistance for a resident that came out of our unrestricted fund. The police grant, there's... that was for their employee recognition, which was about $700. We did a Yak grant, a firefighter's plaque that we did, and then we also held the employee picnic. All of these grants, whenever there's a grant request, it comes to the committee for a vote, and then we decide whether or not we're going to support that. If you look at the very bottom, it'll tell you what the revenue and expenses were for the two events that we did. We netted for the road rally about $3,200 and for the Chili Cook-Off, just under $900. We were... we overall increased our fund balance by just over $12,000. You'll notice on there that the Clerk Scholarship Fund is not funded, so that's a conversation that Laura told me just took place, so that account may come off of the Canton Cares Fund. And then with the events, our net revenue from those was about $4,100. So in the past, we have sent something out to different organizations and to the community to say if you'd like to support it, you can send your funds in. Over the last year or so, we haven't done that quite as much, so I think that's something that we may want to consider doing, because if people don't know about it, they're certainly not going to support it. We do occasionally get donations from people. We'll hear from the Police Department, and you know, a community member may say, I want to find a way to help out in some way, so they direct it to us. But I think it's important that we make sure that people know that this exists so that we can continue to do what's needed in the community, because it's nice to have especially that unrestricted fund when there's a resident in need, and we've been getting more and more of those calls, to be able to go to that committee and say, this is one of the few places that we can get funds to actually support an individual. So, any questions? No?
I'll just comment that I... being on both sides of this equation, that I just really appreciate how well this has taken off for everyone involved since it started five years ago or whenever it was. So, yeah, so it's a great way for the community to be able to give... organizations or people in the community to be able to give back to their community and for us to do it in a way that's legal and easy to use, so.
I will say that as I go out to other communities, this is one of the things that I talk about, because I think it was a great idea to really support the community and, you know, kind of that grassroots effort. So hopefully more communities will jump on board and follow your lead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of the resolution for the WCDPS 2023 Annual Permit Package, Combined Permit Package for Annual Maintenance, Pavement, Restoration, and Special Events Permits for Work Within the Wayne County Right-of-Way in 2023. C2, consider approving police and E911 budget amendments to continue dispatch expansion projects from 2022 into 2023. And finally, G... sorry, C3, consider approving a contract, a correction to an RBA resolution from 2022, and that is... oh, for the Motorola stuff.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by trustee Borninski. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next is our general calendar. Item G1, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace...
I think we're starting with G zero.
G zero.
I should ask who the second was on that?
It was trustee Borninski.
I always default to Kate.
I just liked a second.
Love it. Don't leave me hanging. G zero, sorry, Madam Supervisor. Madam Supervisor, I move in the matter of Gary Percy et al. v. Canton Township et al., pending in the United States District Court, to accept the recommendation of defense counsel and proceed accordingly.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, thank you. Item G1, thank you. Consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace boilers at the summit on the park pursuant to the 2019 capital improvement plan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and purchase order for Quality Air Systems at 328 West Six Mile Road in Whitmore Lake, Michigan, 48189, in the amount of fif... five... sorry, $510,000 plus a 10% contingency amount of $51,000, making the total $561,000 to upgrade the boilers at the summit and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by trustee Borninski. In 2019, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan, and subsequently, the township issued capital improvement bonds to fund the CIP. The CIP includes upgrading the boilers at the summit on the park. Specifically, the project's scope includes adding two high-efficiency shoulder boilers, one tankless hot water system, and four new heat exchangers. The CIP project went out to bid on October 6, 2022, and adhered to responsible contracting guidelines. Staff is recommending order contract to Quality Air Systems for the boiler replacement project to facilities at the summit on the park for $561,000, which includes a 10% contingency. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
That pretty much sums it up. I do want to just bring it to everyone's attention that this is one of the few projects that we have come in under budget on in the CIP by almost $200,000, so just thought that was worth mentioning.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider accepting a justice assistance grant and an associated amendment to the 2023 police budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the acceptance of a justice assistance grant for specified equipment through the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount of $9,206 and to approve the listed amendment to the 2022 police budget.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by trustee Foster. I'll choose... Canton Police Department has been awarded a justice assistance grant, JAG, for specific equipment through the U.S. Department of Justice. JAG number is listed is for tasers in the amount of $9,206. A budget amendment to the 2023 police budget is included in this request should the board choose to accept these grants. Chief Chad, do you want to comment?
I have no comments, but I will take questions.
Well, Michael, did it say 2022 in the RBA?
Amendment said 2022 budget.
So should it be 2022 or 2023?
That is a question for police or finance, although it says 2023.
In the summary.
Yeah.
In the actual amendment.
Action item.
But it does say 2022 on the model resolution.
I think there was a typo in the actual resolution. It needs to amend the 23 budget.
So it is 2023?
Correct. That's the revenue and expense.
And I said 2022.
Yeah.
Allow me to amend my motion. I'd love to amend it for the 2023 budget.
Questions? No. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider approving the purchase of 1911 call taker computer workstation.
I move to approve the purchase of 1911 call taker computer workstation in the amount of $14,718.59 from Entrado Life and Safety Solutions.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by trustee Snyderman. The police and fire departments are requesting to purchase 1911 call taker computer workstation for its newly expanded dispatch center in the amount of $14,718.59 from Entrado Life and Safety Solutions. This will be the sixth call taker computer workstation in the new center and will be set up for training, major incidents, or normal position failures. E911 budget funds will be utilized for this purchase. Director Bauer or Director Stockland, would you like to comment?
This will support, you know, just as we said in the resolution, the sixth position as we plan and expand over the years. I know the fire chief and myself are... demand seems to be going up and going back to pre-pandemic calls for service, so this will support those incidents.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider approval of a resolution for the board to submit its application to the Wayne County for American Rescue Plan Act funds for Canton Town Square project at Cherry Hill Village.
Madam Supervisor, I am ensuring I can make this motion and vote on it. I apologize. Okay, it's just the application. Sorry.
It's okay.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the resolution to apply for American Rescue Plan Act funds to be used towards the Canton Town Square project at Cherry Hill Village.
Support.
Clerk Seigris, supported by trustee Borninski. Canton Township has an opportunity to partner with Wayne County and receive $4,750,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds to use toward the Canton Town Square project at Cherry Hill Village. The Town Square project will invest in some of the community's most treasured assets, including the Village Square Park, Village Arts Factory Building, Factory Park, Cherry Hill School, Preservation Park, Trails, public parking improvements, wayfinding and programming in the town square. Canton Township will match Wayne County's investment in the community assets, utilizing ARPA funds, insurance proceeds, Wayne County Village funds, and existing fund balance for a total of $9,500,000 in community investment. These investments into the community's assets will improve the quality of life for residents, increase property values, grow the tax base, and spur small and medium-sized business development in Canton. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so this is a resolution that the county asked the board to consider, passed tonight, for the partnership that we've been working with them on over the past year to invest in the Canton Town Square project at Cherry Hill Village. So I'll take any questions that board members may have.
Questions or comments? No? Okay.
I just want to say that I appreciate everyone who's worked on this project. I am glad that we are passing this resolution. It's one step forward in making this a reality, but I also appreciate the commitment to working with partners at the county to making sure that we get this done for our residents. I think this is a first for Canton Township, where we've seen this kind of investment in the township from the county, and so I appreciate everyone on the team for making this happen. We're working to make this one step closer to happening.
Yeah, I concur with trustee Foster's comments that it's a good thing that it's not just we who are doing it, it's also the county invested in our community.
Yeah, I want to echo what everyone else said. I know there was a lot of work that went into this, so I appreciate all of that, all the time added to it also to make this closer to a reality for us. Also, a matter of procedure, I'm looking at the actual resolution, and it does have a roll call on it, so I'm wondering if we should do that. Also wondering if we should read the resolution.
There's no legal requirement to either, but if we would like to, I'll read it.
I just happened to notice that it said that, so...
Yeah. All formal... yeah, all formal resolutions say roll call, for sure, but we don't do roll call votes on her.
I'll just... oh, sorry, Michael, I cut you off. I thought you were done. I just wanted to add that I think each of us up here on this podium has spoken out and actually ran on improving and reinvigorating Cherry Hill Village, and I'm so glad to see us doing this. And to you guys, the full-time electeds that have worked hard on this as well, I appreciate that. It's something we've all wanted to see, and with the partnership of the arts and we... it's going to be a great project to work on, and I'm excited for it.
And I think just because the Town Square project is kind of still in development, right? So we're publicly voting on something that we don't... it is... that is kind of going through the creation process, and then we'll go through the public input process. So it's super interesting to be talking about a project without a final product, to kind of show people is... it's interesting. It's an interesting spot. But I'm super grateful that the county joined as a partner to echo what other trustees have said. I think it was smart. The township received $9.2 million of ARPA money. I think it was smart of us to take half of that money and double it by getting the county to participate and join in a project. You know, I think there was a lot of wisdom in doing that and doing a transformative project in an area of the township that is... that is central to this notion of walkability, this idea not typical in Canton Township, a community developed around the automobile, to have this downtown, this hamlet that is kind of designed around place-making and around people and around community, because too often our built environment makes us feel isolated. So I like that. I like that a lot, and I'm really excited about that. There's been a lot of energy and effort in this area, and so I'm just excited to see where this is going to go, and I like that the process is getting bigger and including more people, and I'm grateful for those who have taken this and run with it. And, yeah, it's going to be really cool to see what happens. When we were looking at the data in Canton Township, what was abundantly clear is that folks in the west side of Canton drive a lot, and people in Canton tend to go elsewhere for entertainment. And I think those are two really big challenges when it comes to sustainable community in the long term, and I hope that this vision and this project will allow people in Canton to feel more comfortable staying in Canton and for less people to have to drive a very long distance to get access to things. It's good for the environment, it's good for community. There is one typo in the resolution, I did not notice until now, but it does say that there's a period instead of a comma, so I'll make sure we fix that on the formal resolution, but it says basically 4,000 with like... and then instead of $4 million, because one of those commas is a period, but we'll fix that. Other than that, great job from staff and the leadership of the township and the leadership of the county, and I look forward to the county commission weighing in on this and giving us the final green light.
Anyone else? Thank you. Nope, this is a great public-private partnership, and I look forward to expanding it and doing this for our residents, as we have many things that we want to do here. But the staff did a great job, and thank you for all the work you did getting us here, and more to come very soon. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right. Item G5.
Madam Supervisor, I'm going to... when I read the motion, I'm going to modify the language a little bit, because the final IGA hasn't been received by the township yet. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, between the Charter County of Wayne and Canton Township for the Canton Town Square project, subject to the approval of Chief Counsel and the Township Supervisor once received.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by trustee Foster. Canton Township has an opportunity to partner with Wayne County and receive $4,750,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds to use toward the Canton Town Square project at Cherry Hill Village. The Town Square project will invest in some of the community's most treasured assets, including the Village Square Park, Village Arts Factory Building, Factory Park, Cherry Hill School, Preservation Park Trails, public parking improvements, wayfinding and programming in the town square. Canton Township will match Wayne County's investment in the community's assets, including ARPA funds proceeds, insurance proceeds, Wayne County Village funds, and existing fund balance for a total of $9,500,000 in community investment. These investments into the community assets will improve the quality of life for residents, increase property values, grow the tax base, and spur small and medium-sized business development in Canton. Wayne County Corporate Counsel and Canton Township attorneys have drafted an intergovernmental agreement in regards to the funding for Canton Town Square project, and as Clerk Seigris said, subject to approval in the motion. Deputy Supervisor, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I'll just add that we were working on this IGA diligently over the weekend and got it into a kind of a final draft, which then had to go through Wayne County's Corporation Council.
Council office. They received that final draft on Monday and are still working to finalize the draft. They had requested some additional insurance documents from Canton Township just this morning, which we provided to them promptly, and I believe that some of the figures in the insurance documents need to go into the final intergovernmental agreement. But once we receive the final intergovernmental agreement from the county, I will forward that to the board members, so all of you have a chance to take a look at it and review it, and once everybody's comfortable with the agreement, we will go ahead and sign it.
Questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion passes. Okay, and I think that's all we have for the schedule. Is there any public comment in the room? Okay, sir, you want to come up and state your name and your concern?
George Miller. I have a map I'd like for you to look at of Canton. Section 36. Basically, Hannon Road and Michigan Avenue. As you turn south on Hannon Road, the west side, from the center of the road of Hannon is in Canton Township. If there's a wreck there, they respond, the police of Canton does, Township. So there's a dump over there, a couple, and one was, you know, 20 or 30 years ago. They're having a problem with it. I mentioned it to you, Marie. Evidently, there's been a mix-up. You said it was in Canton. I don't think so. I got a map here of Van Buren. They don't claim it, and if it is, they owe you a lot of tax revenue. So anyway, that dump is having a problem, whether it's Leachin or it's Pondin. So I'd like to know, or have an update since it's in this township, and they've raised it 25 to 30 or 40 foot, and what effect that's going to have on the drainage to the Rouge River, to Wayne, to Inkster, to Dearborn. If there's a three or four or six-inch rain here, 100-year rain, how is that going to affect it? They've raised it, and everybody brags, all those waste companies, five foot in the state. Five foot's enough. Well, evidently not on that dump, because they added another good 25 foot. You can see it when you drive down to Hannon Road. Mud strung from one side of Hannon Road all the way to Van Born. The other day I was down there, and it's so bad that when you slide with mud, you slide 20 or 30 or 40 foot, just like on ice. And I'd like to know what can be done to resolve the problem, whatever it is on that. I've asked, I don't know if it's got a liner in it, back in 1980. Wayne County Health Department did a workup in 80, 28 million to clean it up. And now they're putting more dirt, and they say it's 20, it used to be $2,500 an acre. Well, that $2,500 an acre for 25 or 50 acres doesn't come to 28 million. So they give the permit and do that. Everybody has open arms for that, and evidently they're not doing too good down there. So I'd like to know an update on that, since you're running the township, what's taking place down there, maybe on the wells? In fact, years ago, public record, I've mentioned it many times, PCB was in there, transformer blew, they put it in there, and now, is that a problem? That should have went over to Willer Run to that dump over there. But your health department in 1978 or 80 okayed it to go there. It can handle it. Well, maybe it's not doing very good now, because there's a problem there, and it needs to be addressed with full force and aggressive, because there is a problem, and it could be a big problem later. Also, while I'm on that, I'd like to know what's being done with the lead over there at the shooting range, how it's being caught and recycled or dug up or whatever's being done. If it's done 10 or 20 years ago, we're talking five tons of lead, as big as a fork truck battery. I think that's what was out of it last time, and that's, it's been 10 or 20 years. There's a lot of, this is not, when you, there's a lot of shooting over there, practicing, so be it. This is not just somebody shooting at one duck or a half a dozen ducks over there once a year. This has been, that's the way it is over there. There was a situation they had where they could recycle it, catch it on a steel backboard like, and shovel it up, and it would drop down without ricocheting.
Thank you.
But it was too expensive then. I like my three minutes.
You had your three minutes. Thank you, thank you.
These other people have more than three minutes, these developers.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else in the room? No? Okay, I'll look online. We have some attendees, anyone online like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand. Public comment? No public comment? No public comment? All right, thank you. Okay, do we have any staff comments coming up?
I'll just mention that we're about two weeks away from getting the first new ambulances in service. We've been working on that, and Fleet's been working on it a lot, and we appreciate all their help, especially through the holidays, getting them set, but it looks like another couple of weeks we'll have the state inspection, and we'll be ready to go with the first new ambulance rolling down the road.
That's good, thank you. Any other staff comment? No? Okay, we'll start down here. Tanya, for word comment?
Happy New Year, everyone, and I am looking forward to the MLK Day celebrations at the library, at the, you know, by the community at the library, and also at the Cherry Hill Theater. So it's, I think, at 6:30 on?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, yeah, so I hope to see people there.
Summer?
Happy New Year. With the new year, we got new legislators, and so thank you to State Representative Matt Colizar to his, for his service to Canton. He no longer represents Canton, but he's still in the legislature, but now we have Representative Kevin Coleman, along with Representative Ronjeve Puri, and we also have Congresswoman Debbie Dingell, and so thank you to Haley Stevens for her service of Canton Township over the last several years. She did leave office with a, with a nice surprise for Canton Township in awarding us some money for one of our parks, a million dollars, so was very happy to see that at the end of the year. But, yeah, thank you to them for their service to Canton, and look forward to seeing what comes next.
Thank you. Michael?
Still just really happy and excited about what Summer just said.
It does, yeah. Million dollars towards our park.
That's pretty awesome. That is pretty awesome. I just wanted to congratulate Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson, who last Friday was awarded the Presidential Citizens Medal, pretty for her work administering the elections here in Michigan. I'm grateful for her leadership and congratulate her on that.
I watched that, I watched the ceremony.
You watched it?
Yeah, it was good. Yeah, it was great, her and the others that received it.
Pretty awesome. It's been a rough, it's been a rough two years for election officials, so it felt really good to see an election official get that award. Outside of that, Clerk's Office is doing passports now, and we are humming. Every single day we're doing passports, so we're pretty excited about that, and we'll, I think we're going to blow through, we're going to blow our revenue projections out of the water for 2023 when it comes to passports, so pretty geeked about that. Yeah, so if you need a passport, come on down.
Thank you. Kate?
I wanted to wish our neighbors and community members who celebrate Orthodox Christmas, Merry Christmas, and also bring our attention to Poverty in America Month, which is January, and thinking about what we can all do to address poverty in our community.
Yeah, Happy New Year, everyone, and if you're looking for something interesting to do one day at lunchtime, the Local Impact Alliance here in Canton is having a lunch and learn, and it's being put on by the radio station at the high school, 881 The Park, and they are discussing how in today's world of different views of news and the media, how local high school students are actually reporting on the news. So it'll be interesting to hear how they're doing that through social media, through the radio station and other ways in our community. Local, local news is not the same as it used to be in our community, and they're doing a great job over at the high school. So come here in this room on Wednesday, the 18th, at 11:30 a.m. You can bring your lunch if you like, or just come and listen and go to lunch afterwards.
Happy New Year. I want to echo everything my colleagues have said. Want to congratulate all the newly electeds and thank the elected officials who have given us, helped us out with our parks and that, and I think that's about it.
Thank you. Yes, so the Martin Luther King event is, there's a community event, as Tanya said, over at the library in the morning, and then we're partnering with Plymouth Canton Schools for the evening event, so that's going to be an exciting event on Monday. We also have some community we've been meeting, there's a civility project coming up also, so the Local Impact Alliance, I know that's not until February 7th, but that's pretty interesting.
It is, but it's not in Canton. We're partnering, I think, with Westland on that one.
Yes.
And so it'll be at Westland Town Hall in February. You can check localimpactalliance.com for the date and time for that in February, and that's continuing with the news, that is, looking at being, both sides of any discussion, being able to have civil conversation, and so it should be an interesting discussion.
Definitely. Great, thank you. Well, Happy New Year, everybody, and thanks for coming, thanks for coming in. We have a partnership partner in the audience. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, meeting adjourned. Yay.